Order. So before we get started, I just want to welcome Maria Webb, who is our new executive assistant since we attended. She's working with Anne and tonight she's going to be, she and Pollack are going to take the minutes and they're going to work together. And then, you know, we're going to have Maria going forward here. So thank you, welcome. I just need a motion to accept the minutes of non-public for December 8th, the public and non-public of January 12th, and the public minutes of January 26th.
I'll make a motion to accept that slate of minutes.
Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor of accepting those minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. All right, first up is update on COVID-related items. Wayne?
The COVID currently, I know people are beginning to consider some trend lines that look positive. But at this point, it's kind of like a Jekyll and Hyde scenario in that we haven't quite got to a point where we can put a number of data points together to reach a real conclusion. In the United States, we're down 44% COVID cases in the last week. But same time, the death rate is about as bad as it was a year ago. In New Hampshire, the COVID numbers have really dropped dramatically. But in Cheshire County, they are the highest in New Hampshire, and positivity rate is 18.2. I think that's driven by a couple of outbreaks at Keene State College. But you know, we'll get that information as well in the next week or so. So things are still pretty hard to predict. But if we look at Hinsdale School District, the news is almost all good. We're down to two cases. And in February so far, we've had about nine cases. We had over 110 in January, which was more than half of what we've had for the entire year. Our tests, which we call the Safer School Screening Program, that's going well. I think parents are very happy to have an option, and I haven't heard of any issues. So you know, I do think we're very fortunate. I know Elise and Jan have been working hard to make this all work. And hopefully, they're seeing some of the light at the end of the tunnel. I would like to remind people that we do have SRR3 and SRR2 money, which was COVID money, money that we have as a result of the pandemic. And it was to help take care of learning loss, take care of increasing safety, taking care of costs that were associated with COVID, which we, you know, we've hired a custodian who cleans and sanitizes. We've got paras who are helping with students. We've got a couple of full-time substitutes that are taking care of staff when they're out. And even then, we've been stretched. Do think that's coming back too, as our staff numbers are getting better. So we're looking ahead for next year. And we haven't approached the board yet. We're just starting to come up with some input. And part of the provision around the SRR3 in particular is that we seek public input. So I would, I'm using this, it just as an opportunity. If you have an idea, I know we are providing after-school tutoring. We've got an after-school bus. But maybe there's some things we're missing around catch-up learning. We did, and our students, as did across the state and around the country, they've fallen a bit in math and reading. Social emotional learning is not as strong as it would have been without this pandemic, that's very clear. So if you have an idea, email me or call me. We'll be talking to admin in March. We'll be meeting with the board on this issue in April and May. And hopefully, by the end of June, we've got an idea of what we might spend next year for our SRR3. The SRR3 has to be spent by September 2024. Money that's not spent by then will just go back to other districts. We draw this money, it doesn't go to our bank account. It's money that the state has set aside. It's actually from the feds to the state. State takes some, leaves the rest for us to draw down as we find areas that meet the criteria. And the criteria is becoming more and more strict and difficult. And it's, it's, it's very hard to maintain the kind of monthly report-outs that we have to maintain on these. So whatever we do, it has to meet that criteria because the feds are very strict about what it could be spent for. So anyway, long story short, I just wanted to use that opportunity. And I would like to say that I think overall in Hinsdale, the worst as far as COVID is behind us. But we've had three variants, and I've got my fingers crossed we don't ever see a fourth. And if we don't, I think, you know, we'll be in a better place in a month. With Adam, hope for any questions?
Any questions for Wayne? Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And then, you know, of course, one, community connections with that public input, we, you know, we could help out with that.
Right. Any input we get.
Whatever we do.
And it needs to be in the minutes and much as we can get it on record.
Great, thank you. Next up, winter sports update. I don't know if Sam's on or Ann or Wayne.
Our athletic director, China, is at Holy Family in Manchester. Both varsity teams are here, but he's left me some notes. The season is moving along quite smoothly. It looks like both varsity teams will make the postseason. The girls are in 11th place, or excuse me, 12th place, and the boys in 11th. The girls' season concludes on February 18th. Playoffs start to fall on Monday, the 21st. And the boys' season concludes on the 23rd. The playoffs starting on February 28th. There have been some game cancellations. We've canceled two due to COVID. Other teams have also canceled two. And right now, the thing seems to be going very smoothly. That's the overall picture. I think families and kids are having a good season. Thank you for your support.
Any questions for Ann? Great, thanks, thanks, Sam, for passing that along.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, program of studies.
And this was on the agenda, the last one. And we have to be a few other changes. And you'll notice the changes last month were highlighted in yellow. We looked at some of the policies from the state for the minimum graduation requirements. And so we made some minor changes. Those minor changes are highlighted in purple. And mostly what.
And boards will get those next block.
And those minor changes are mostly clearly defining what of the sciences we have to have, a life science and a physics science. American Studies requirements, it could be American Studies. One does not have to be World History only. It could be Global Studies, World History, or Geography. You need to have that physical. So there's opportunity there for flexibility on that. And the economics has to, has to have a component of personal finance. We talked about that at length when Mrs. Holc was teaching the class. And computer science is no longer called that. It's called Information Computer Science and Communication. So we made some minor changes in the minor exposure in COVID. I have some questions that would like to clarify. We need to read them out some.
Yep, yeah, I know, I know Sean had, had wanted to put back on, and I had a few too. So, so I'll just open up for questions for Ann.
Man? Yeah, so, so I had to be remote last month because of work. And you know, sometimes, even though you're paying attention, sometimes there's stuff that you kind of, you kind of miss. When I was going back through my notes, I had some questions, and I rewatched the video. And the program of studies itself seems fine. But I know when the presentation was being given, and they were talking about scheduling. And I understand scheduling is very difficult because we, I think, at one point, I don't know who it was, one of the admin actually took us around to see the, the big calendars, right? And, you know, was showing us how difficult scheduling is. So I get that, I'm not trying to minimize that. But, you know, I made notes of several, several times the comments were made that, you know, some classes may not, may not run if this, if, if there's only a few kids in there or, or whatever, however it was worded. And it just seemed to me to be kind of, kind of going in the opposite direction of what we've been talking about with individualized instruction and stuff like that. And, you know, what, what I found disturbing was there was an example given of an AP class that wouldn't necessarily run. And I mean, why wouldn't we run an AP class? If the kids were engaged and, you know, excelling in a given topic, why wouldn't we run an AP class? We spend a lot of resources on sped. But I continuously see that there's not a whole lot for kids that can do more or want to do more. So I'm like, I mean, I made the motion to approve the program of studies. I think programs and studies is fine. But the explanation of scheduling and kind of moving in the opposite direction of where the board has been going, after I listened to it again, didn't really sit well with me.
I, I hope that I was not the one to make this comment.
Nope, nope.
Because I firmly believe that personalized learning really should be directed at what kids need. That's our job. And we have kids who have taken algebra in grade eight, and they're ready for calculus at the high school level with a live teacher who can answer questions in the moment and help them comprehend. And we should offer that class. Likewise, we have three kids who want to take Spanish five, and they were tired to get there. I think we have to recognize the intellectual integrity of our students first. And if they choose to pursue a pathway, it's very important for us to support it. So my philosophy, I think, is towards personalized learning. And as long as I have any control over the schedule, I'd like to make sure that classes are not limited by who is taking what content. Who are we to say that calculus is more important than music? If we have kids who really want to pursue music, they should likely be allowed to. And that's, that's what I believe.
Right. I mean, and I know there's a bunch of different ways, you know, to do that. That's like, like I said, and that's just why when I was listening, when I was listening to it back over again, I was like, because I had made a few notes, you know, double check on this, go back on this.
There's some philosophical differences.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that, you know, because the board has been moving towards, you know, that, that, you know, the pace, the competency-based assessment, individualized instruction, all of these different things. And I, I don't want to step back.
Neither do I.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
And I just wanted to add too, because I was remote as well. So, and I went back and watched it. And along just those same lines, because I had made some notes about that at the time. And it was a little hard to hear some of the conversations. So, and yeah, and one, in addition to the personalized learning piece, but also because we're a small district. And, you know, a decade ago, when we decided not to regionalize with Winchester, that was one of the things I remember people talking about is that you have to recognize our classes aren't going to be 20, 25 kids, you know, elective. And, and I did some, not crunching some numbers. And like, I know some, at one point, I think the, like, five or seven kids was thrown out. It's like, you know, in a class, you know, it's not a good use of a teacher's period to have a class with five or seven kids in it. But if you have five kids with, we have 137, I think it is, kids in the high school, just look at high school elections, electives. That's like 3.6%. So Messineck, I think, is the next school closest to us in enrollment, probably. And they have 370-some kids in their school, in their high school. So for 3.6% of the high school population to be taken an elective, that's 12 or 14 kids in Messineck, 14, because they are much, that's 50 kids in the class. So would we not run a class with 12 kids? You know what I mean? You have to look at, at the percentages. We're not going to have the wrong numbers. So, so that, you know, and then looking at, you know, how many kids are in classes? And so, you know, there, there are a bunch of electives that have half a dozen kids. And then even some of the ELO teachers, you know, if you look at their schedule, two kids, seven kids, five kids. So are we just going to, if we, if we go down that route, it would just be a little scary because we would just chop a lot of stuff out. So.
Would be sad.
It would.
I don't know how you frame that in terms of ensuring that that does not cancel.
Yeah, I don't know, but, yep.
But I do think it's a philosophical point of view. And our teachers work hard, whether they have 50 kids a day or if they have 80 kids a day, they, they work hard. And I think it's to their credit. They have a small class number, they really deliver a personalized learning. And I, I myself remember in college, I was the only one in industrial chemistry class. I was the only one. That class ran, and I learned so much.
I just remember in high school, I, I had taken Spanish, you know, all through middle school and high school. So I went through, I did all the honors things. I went to Spain, you know, the whole nine yards, right? I remember my, I think it was my junior year. And my, in my graduating classes, more kids than our entire district, right? But they were offering, oh, you know, they were offering Russian. And I was like, oh, that's cool, because I was really into language at that point. And so I had signed up for Russian, but there were only two other kids signed up. So they didn't run the class, you know. And, you know, could I take the class now? Sure, I could. But I'm still kind of bummed out that I didn't take it then, you know what I mean? So I just, I just don't want someone, you know, I just want to make sure that we're moving forward in the direction that we've been going.
I agree.
Any other questions about the programs of studies? Thank you, Ann.
No, thank you.
Next up, we have the election warrant. So the warrant, MS-27, all that is, was over in the other room to sign. And also, we would need, I mean, I guess, well, no. Our next meeting will be after the election. So maybe we should just put it up there today that we'll need counters that night. So it'll be, I think it's the eighth, Tuesday, the eighth. And I think we've all counted. Julia, did you, have you counted before, right?
No, no.
Okay. So yeah, so if you're anybody who's available, you just go down right before the polls close and stick around and count the school slide. April, you can't count because you're on the ballot.
Yeah.
Um.
You can count town side.
So she can count for the town.
Yeah.
Because I don't know why.
Oh, you probably can't count because you're on the ballot too, yeah.
On the ballot too. So.
So we'll have to do some swapping.
And I can go for the town, and then we'll get it done.
Yeah, yeah. Normally, we just kind of figure it out if there's not enough, you know, some towns, town counters will come over for us. So.
Yeah, I'll be available, so.
Cool, so yeah, just let Ann know, you know, prior to then, just so we kind of have an idea.
Yeah, it starts, you can count at seven, so you can come down as both.
How many did that, right, March what?
I think it's the eighth, right? It's the Tuesday before district meeting. Yep.
And we have the school board.
Yeah, it's actually a fun time generally. I always have a good time when we do it. Um, all right. Next up is budget discussion. Jody and Wayne?
Oh, I think it was safe, it would be safe for me to tell you that I was a little surprised by the events that unfolded during the public hearing on Wednesday. We, we thought that we had complied with the budget committee's initial request that, at least the way we understood it, to reduce 50,000. We reduced 52. Wednesday night, they asked us to reduce another 47. It's been a little, it's been difficult to do that, to be honest. I don't know where we can take that money. We can't, I talked to the folks at the DRA about the possibility of reducing the sped budget. And they very vigorously advised us not to do that. So, which I didn't really think we could do it anyway. I don't know where there's that money in there. So, you know, we were held up because of weather, both on Friday and on Monday, so we weren't able to meet. And I put it into transportation, specifically athletic transportation. Now, I'm not happy with having it there. I doubt that anybody is happy with having it there. Unless we can, and I don't know now if we can change it. We just didn't have the time. A lot because of, you know, the short period of time, and but also because of the weather, to, to get together and, and come up with something. But honestly, I don't know what we would have come up with. I really don't. I think that, that we had done a really good job of trimming our budget. That last 52 took us really to the bare bones of needs, not wants. So I'm a little bit out of a loss. We prepared the warrant article as advised by the DRA. And I think it's, you guys have seen it in the other room and in your package.
I mean, you want me, I can just also, just to clarify with the process with people. And Jody hit it all in the head, everything. And also, one other piece is that, so the MS-27 had to be available Tuesday, you know, for people to come in and sign. For the budget committee had to sign it. And I think I know, a forum has signed it today. So like she said, you had to reflect on that column. The school board column stayed the same because our budget recommendation didn't change. Had to reflect in that column, that, that reduction. And, you know, that, you know, it was, they, that's where the reduction was entered. Because, I mean, it, we would have to have a larger discussion about, if you entered it on an academic line, what academic program, what teacher's going to get cut? And in one day's notice of having to enter it at the DRA, the, our attorney's advice at first was to enter all zeros on the budget committee's line, since they don't have purview over lines anyway, and just put the bottom-line number in. But the software wouldn't allow Jody to do that. So then, when she spoke to the DRA, they say you have to reflect it somewhere. And so, so that's where it's reflected in that column. The school board column didn't change. So, and then, you know, if that's the number that passes, then, you know, we'll have to get together and talk more about it and work it out. So, but I know there's probably, I know we wanted to discuss it.
You do have an updated warrant that isn't what's different than your package.
Oh, the one that was over in the other, yeah. So it is, yeah, that reflects the changes.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay.
Add that to you, because I think that's.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Yeah, because when the packets were put together, you know, we were still talking to the DRA and talking to legal to get the, the exact wording of how to, because the warrant article is going to show the two different amounts too, as well as the MS-27, which, you know, this is the first time in all the years I've been on the board that it's happened. So, so like I said, Jody and I both were on the phone. I have a phone legal, and she was on the phone with the DRA quite a bit on Thursday.
Quite a bit. And they're tough to get ahold of this time of year. If, if you'd like, I can read the article too.
I mean, we think, well, Ann, Ben's going to bring it over. I think, I think it's. Yeah, because the one in our packet, I think it was.
Two different numbers with question marks.
Yeah, two different numbers, yeah, with question mark. Yeah, so the, the approved number, the, but the budget committee approved is on the top of the article in the line. And then underneath it, it says what the school board has voted on.
And I wasn't sure, when I had to put this in the packet, when I had submitted to Ann, it's for the packet, I wasn't sure how to word that until I spoke to our DRA advisor.
Yeah. Yep, so. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So if anybody has any question, definitely discussion.
I certainly have some discussion. I do think when we went to the budget committee last week, they asked us repeatedly, you know, what, we want you to come to us with your bottom-line budget. What do you need to run to the school district? And I think several people made a very good job of stating the case that we'd already cut it to what we felt was the bare minimum. And then we took another 52,000 out, and they wanted more. I will say, as a mother of athletes in the school district for years, and to me personally feeling the importance of athletics, should we remove the athletic transportation? Almost down to nothing, and we'll leave $3,000 in the budget, we will no longer be able to participate in athletics to the state of New Hampshire. We cannot participate in NHIA without being able to travel to games. So we would effectively be eliminating the sports program from the school district. And I just think, and not only is the 47,000, I mean, I guess, then you get a whole lot more cuts, right? Because we don't have coaches, and we don't have all kinds of expenses.
So I do want to say that, I, I, this year, because of the bus transportation was so difficult, a lot of districts in the state still did their way to sports events, but they didn't provide buses for sport events. So they were letting, families and kids got themselves to the games on their own. So I, that is an option. It's not a great option.
Imagine that would be more challenging for our particular district than for several districts that might have more options for parents to drive and get vans. I think in our particular district in this area, that would, that would not be a practical solution. So I, I just want to put it out there. I mean, I understand that, that the budget committee wants us to take this money from somewhere. No transportation, no sports. That's what it comes down to. And I think that's, that's a really, really sad thing to even be discussing.
April, you had your hand up?
Yes. I had a question about if, if the budget committee passes, do we have to take it out from that line that we've put it in? And if, I mean, and if we don't, I mean, I think we've already cut academics quite a bit from our budget as it is. So it does need to come from somewhere. Does the whole 50,000 need to come from transportation? I don't know. You know what I mean? But I'm hoping we don't have to cut it, honestly, at all. And we won't have to worry about it. Because we have, we are at a minimum budget, I feel. We've worked really hard to make it what it is. And that was the number to make it. So we wouldn't have to cut sports. We wouldn't have to cut a program, or a teacher, or anything else that we've got going on right now. So I just wanted to, that was my question. Like, if it passes, do we have, because we've taken it, because we've put it in that line, do we have to take it out of that line? If it passes.
Yeah, no, no. Even now, all throughout the year, the, the school board has the authority to move, move stuff around amongst lines as things change and things happen. So, yeah, there would be a much larger discussion, you know.
That's what I.
Anyway, you know, it was like, mostly, like I said, and then, and it was, the school board didn't even have to vote on it, according to the DRA, because it's the budget, you know, it's not our line. Our line, our column didn't change. So, so it just needed to be reflected somewhere to make the math work on the form. And so, you know, there was, you know, so that's where the administration had to reflect it somewhere. So, but yeah, we, there would absolutely be big discussions about it. Either way, because, you know, with, with the way the deadlines were, if we, like I said, if we put it in academic lines, we'd have to, there, somebody there would have to decide, like, what program? And then, in the back of your mind, what teacher? And then that triggers a whole bunch of legal stuff with the non-renewal deadline. And, and we know that we would have to deal with after that later. So it was just a mess all around with, with completing the form, basically. But yes, we would have a much huge discussion about it, yeah. I, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but that's my opinion. It's the board would really.
Would have to, right. I mean, personally, I think it was unreasonable for the budget committee, a week before this had to be signed, to ask us to take another $47,000 out of this budget, was completely unreasonable. But I just felt the need, as a committee member that's been very involved in athletics for 25 years in this school district, that I think it would be a tragedy to affect the athletic program in that way.
Yes, absolutely. Let's hope the town feels the same way.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and like you said, it could be moved. And if some would, I mean, some might have to come out of there. It would be, you know.
Right.
We have a larger discussion, spread it around. Maybe some things would, there'd be some other options, you know? But I don't know, that's a bigger discussion, yeah.
I totally get it.
Yeah. So Sean or Jim?
So I guess, I just wanted to, on a personal level, thank those people who spoke out in favor of our budget. But grudgingly acknowledge those people who didn't think it was for the town. I think that as far as transportation goes, I go back to one of my earliest things is that, that it's not like we have 40,000, $47,000. But if field trips want to pursue funding through HEF, you know, those are smaller numbers that could happen. And anything that happens along those lines, money could be saved. You know, it is a help salvage, you know, transportation or whatever else might be threatened by the additional cuts.
But we only have $14,000 just to have lots.
Yeah.
We're not rich by any means.
But we don't know what's gonna happen with California.
You don't have forty seven thousand dollars.
I don't want to get into, uh, for reasons already discussed, I don't want to get into HGF strategy, you know, discussion. But it's something that could, could be looked at, no guarantees.
If you think of it, you can, yeah, jump in, Sean.
Do you have anything, Ken? Well, typically I have a lot to add, right? No, I mean, it, it's gonna sound lousy, but it is what it is, you know, and I feel like we can make it work. You know, I'm as unhappy as everyone else. Obviously, I'm not a sports person, right? So I know that I don't want to cut any more academics, that, that's, that's, you know, cutting more academics for me would be a, a no vote would be ever, if and then we're back to that point, right? Um, I don't want to cut staff, you know, especially after the last couple of years, all of our staff, everything they've done. I don't even think we should be even having that discussion personally. I think it's just gonna take a lot of work, but I maybe am naive, but I feel like whichever way it works out, I think we can make it work.
I agree, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to figure out and move stuff, and, no, I agree too.
I mean, we may not be able to keep everybody like a hundred percent happy, but I think we can keep, I think we, I think we can keep a lot of people happy enough.
Yeah, nobody will be a hundred percent happy because it's, everybody's gonna get, is get, everybody gets touched anyway with, with these reductions, so. Everybody will be a little less than a hundred percent happier.
Yeah, and, and even if we have eighty percent of the people eighty-five percent happy, that's not bad.
Yeah.
You know, so, so I'm trying to be optimistic about it.
No, I, I am too, like what you and April and Julia say, you know, is that we're, we're gonna make it work, it's gonna, you know, whatever happens at district meeting and. You know, and, and we did, we did, we've already cut, um, the athletic trainer, we've cut teachers in the last two years, we cut a position this year. Uh, the, you know, the, we, we're not filling the reading writing, we, we didn't fill a middle school position, we have cut para positions. The regular ed budget is down eighty thousand dollars this, so, I, I mean, it's, everybody's been touched all across the spectrum already, so. You know, and it, it would just, you know, we'll have to work it out, so.
And I would think, I think one of the things that we've talked ad nauseam about, and people just simply don't understand, because it kept coming up again at the budget meeting, is. Yes, the sped budget is a huge piece of our budget, but that is not something that we can cut. They were even suggesting at that meeting, the budget last week, you know, why, why, you found the money last year, can't you just find the money again if you go over? Um, so there's no frivolous spending here, there's a lot of, um, a lot of things, tough choices that have already been made in the last two years. And I'm just not feeling like enough credit was given for those tough changes, that tough, tough decisions that have already been made. And sacrifices that have been made for our existing staff to not get additional support. Um, you know, some new staffing positions, et cetera, I just, I'm very disappointed that, um. The lack of appreciation for the fifty two thousand dollars that we struggled to find was not appreciated.
Did you think of it yet, Jim?
No, I hear you, once, sometimes it goes from your head.
Don't think of it about three, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, any other questions or comments about the budget, Jody or Wayne or anything? We're all good. Great.
Just throw in the complexity in trying to predict special ed in the future. Just in the last week, I've had a flash, uh, last Thursday, I was told that we have an art district replacement that was likely to graduate early. So I started calculating my head, and that sounded, you know, like a possibility in regards to finding this revenue. And today I was told we have two art district replacements coming, uh, soon. Uh, SAE notified us today that we have two additional ones that will be registering soon. So to project what we'll have in the spring of twenty-three relative to sped costs is very, very difficult. But, and I think we're in a rock and a hard place, and hopefully we can make it work.
Great, thank you, that's, that's a good, uh, good point to point out about the, how fast sped moves. You get one you think is going to graduate early, and then you hear two more moving in, so, you know, yeah, thank you. All right, so next up, we have appointment of members to the principal search committee and the technology director search committee. So we do have a few people, teach, uh, staff members and community members in our packet who have expressed an interest on being in those committees. And, um, as is the, the usual custom is, you know, because we're going to be discussing people, um. Who are, you know, not protected, or who are, who are protected, you know, not board members, so, so we will discuss that in, in non-public. Um, so next up, we have, uh, update job description, the director of technology. So who would like to speak with to that, Wayne or? Anybody have questions about that, Fran?
That makes sense, it's broader, so it does, you know, yeah.
Okay, so I just need a motion to approve the updated job description for the director of technology.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, all right, great, thank you. Um, next up, um, job description for the director of human resources, and then the, sign the contract with, um. MRI, which is municipal resources, Inc. So, and, and actually Sean too, because you're on that committee, you'd really like to speak for that.
I, yeah, I have a, I have a couple of things, you know, because this is the, this is the joint position between the school and the town. So, Richard and Ann and I, along with Dennis and Jill, have been, you know, working on that. So with this job description, it's pretty much fine, there's a couple of things that I'm thinking. As I've looked, as I've looked at it more, I think we might need to, um, to tweak and to clarify, if I can just go down a couple of things. Is that all right? So, near the top on the supervision received. So, let's see, I think that we might need to actually make this, um, two sentences versus the one, just because it's gonna be, I think, a little bit different. On the town side versus the school side. So for supervision received, I think it needs to be, um, you know, the superintendent, you know, because then there's a process for if there's a problem, you know, with some of the superintendent saying. That the person could come to the school board, but I think that we need to take, you know, us out of that supervisory position.
Agreed.
Yeah, good point.
This position receives general supervision and policy direction from the board of selectmen period.
And support selectmen and superintendent.
And the school district superintendent.
It's school district superintendent, or, yeah, or superintendent, however you want to word it.
Well, I think school district.
Yeah, you want to definitely call out.
Because just because you, because you're, you're dividing town and school, which I think, which I think you have to in this one.
I think so too.
I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
And I'll give these to you.
All right, so then down on number four, uh, confers with union representatives for the school district. And my question is, you know, why and to what end? I mean, is it, it's not, because it can't be like a negotiation type of thing, so what is it?
That's, um, that would be like if they want to, uh, a memorandum of understanding, or if they have a, you know, if they're thinking about filing an agreement. Sometimes they can, you can confer before a grievance is filed.
Deal with MOUs, basically.
Yeah, but wouldn't the superintendent be the school board's designee in that situation?
I think, I would think for an MOU, it would be.
Or even a griev, even a grievance, or, you know, those.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I can, I can, I can see the, I can see talking to HR about a grievance.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure about an MOU though, unless they're trying to get some background information on something that's changing from the MOU.
And it just says here, arise and understand the importance of policies, so, by the school board, the superintendent, I, I don't care if you take that out, I mean, it doesn't.
I mean, it can be in there, because I can think of several situations where, um, you know, where checking with HR is completely appropriate and probably a really good idea.
But the superintendent and the union representatives have always been the go-together, you know what I mean? They go to our, him as our designee, and if he needs to go to, or he or she needs to go to HR, that would be different. I, I don't know. But.
Well, I mean, you know, I talk to, I talk to the union reps every once in a while about things that. Wayne doesn't really need to be involved, it's, it's, you know, nothing to do with like legality type of things. Just to, they want to clarify where, where a policy is, they want to clarify a language question, things like that. And that's what that would be.
Okay. Okay, I, I, that's fine, I just like, for some reason, negotiations and that type of thing popped in my head, and that didn't seem, that didn't seem right. But if it's just, but I, like I said, I can see going to HR to check up on some various things.
Right.
You know, and I just want to, and I know this may sound picky, right, but I just want to make sure, because we're, it's like the two entities sharing the one person. I just want to make sure that we're really doing it right, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, you know, I, this, this HR person, we're definitely, you know, if it's anything that Wayne needs to be involved in, or, or a superintendent. Needs to be involved in, that.
Oh, yeah, then I, then I'm sure he'd be pulled right in, yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, and this is like, like all job description, it's kind of a living document, so once it, you're, once it's happening, see how it's working, and if things need to be tweaked, yeah.
Um, so on number ten, it says develops and implements personnel policies and procedures, uh, which I think is fine, because I think that's actually gonna happen, you know, because, because it has to. This person's gonna have to do all these things. Um, but I know for the school district, you know, the board sets policies. So I feel like, I, I feel like there should be a little bit, because it says with the consent of the board of selectmen, school board, and superintendent. But I kind of feel like there needs to be a little bit, something more formal there that the board needs to accept the policy, do you know what I mean? Does that make any kind of sense? Right, but.
I mean, both boards have to accept all the policy.
Right.
This person would be, you know, they would be bringing it to the board.
Yeah, I, and like I said, I just, I feel like that needs to be reworded a little bit, I'm just not exactly sure how. So if anybody has any thoughts on that.
How about instead of with, with consent, saying with?
For approval by the, for approval by.
For, for approval.
By, yeah, board of selectmen, the school board.
Yeah, I actually, I.
For approval by.
Maybe, maybe even for review and approval by.
Right, yeah, that's what.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Develops and implements personnel policies and procedures.
For review and appro, for review and approval by the board of selectmen, the school board, and the superintendent.
Yeah, I like that.
So it's right now, personnel policies, that's mostly like stuff in the SAE manual and stuff like that, and, yeah, okay.
All right, um, so then number sixteen, where it says oversees disciplinary actions up to and excluding, up to and including. Termination on behalf of the board of selectmen and the school board, I, that sounds, that, there's something.
Yeah, what's the overseeing, like?
Carries, it was actually would be carries out.
Yeah, but the paperwork part of it, really.
They're carrying out the termination, disciplinary actions, uh, let's see, what's another word for carry out?
Process?
Termination on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Yeah, process. Because is that what it's getting at, more like the paperwork part of it?
Overseeing, yeah, they're saying they're going through the, going through the motions of, of, they're carrying out the disciplinary actions that were approved by the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not deciding on, right, yeah.
Right, and that's kind of, to me, that's how that sounds.
Over, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so overseeing needs to change.
disciplinary actions up to including termination on behalf of the board of selectmen and the school board. But.
Yeah, maybe not the on behalf of, uh, or, I don't know.
As decided by or as determined by? No, I don't know.
As directed by.
As directed by, yeah, okay. All right, that's cool. Um, are we done with that one? So on number seventeen, it talks about, um. The works harmoniously with elected and appointed town and school officials, the public, public agencies and their staff, the media and private organizations. Again, can we, something, I kind of need to know what we're talking about with the media, because the board chair, the board chair usually deals with media for the board.
Yeah, pressing out press releases and stuff, Sean, I think that's what that means.
Okay. But depending on what it is, that should also go through the, either the superintendent or the board chair.
Yeah.
Per the communication plan.
Yeah, I, I don't think they should, I don't, I don't like the media or private organizations. I just end it at that.
Okay, I'd be all right with that. And the last one that I have. Yes, the last one I have is, uh, twenty-five, is the wellness coordinator for the town, the school district. So I know, Ann, right now, you're doing, you're the wellness coordinator as part of HR, and I think that's fine, but I don't, does the town also have a wellness coordinator?
Yeah, Catherine, Catherine is the wellness coordinator right now, and she needs help.
Okay, all right, and, and my only question on that was for consistency between school and town, I didn't know if both positions existed.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Catherine and I work very closely together.
Okay.
All the blue shop, blue shop clinics and a lot of different other things.
Okay. The word we're looking for is executes.
Oh, um, so Julia was saying on number sixteen, execute as opposed to carry out.
Executes disciplinary actions up to and including termination as directed by, executes.
Yeah, I like that better, yeah. And that was all that I had.
Does anybody else have any, um, input or questions on, on this job description? No, yeah, I had two things, and Sean also had them, so that was covered. Um, all right, so if there's no more discussion, then we just need a motion to approve the job description. And Wayne, do you want a second motion to authorize me to sign the agreement with, uh, MRI or all in one?
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the amended job description for HR.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay. And then we just need a motion to allow the chair to sign the agreement with the MRI.
I will make a motion for the chair to sign the agreement with the MRI.
Any further agreement or any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay, great, thanks. All right, so then, uh, next up is, uh, final reading of, um, a group of policies, and I'm not going to say the alphabet soup, so.
I'll second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor of approving those as a final reading, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay, and then we have a group for the first reading, so send a motion.
I will make that motion.
Uh, any discussion on those as a first reading? Right, all those in favor of approving that group as a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay, thanks. All right, any other business? Any other business? No, I'm just looking. I didn't say you did, I'm just making eye contact.
But now I'm trying to remember.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, do you? Okay, thanks.
I just want to go back to the, um, I'm sorry, the director of human resources timeline. And if you guys can agree to.
Oh, so, yeah.
Committee members, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, yeah.
I missed it too, I had it all in with the job description, so, um.
And we did talk about this in our HR meeting, it's one select board, one school board, the business administrator, the superintendent, the town administrator. The town department, a town department head, and the director of human resources.
No, and I'm just trying to find it now.
It was right with all the.
Was budget committee on there? Because isn't Dennis on that committee?
Oh, good one, yes, we should have, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, and thank you for, for pointing out the description, because I, I had noted that, and then I totally swept it up here with the other one. Yeah, so then we just need to add a, a budget committee member. All right, so we just need a motion to approve that makeup.
I'll make that motion.
Um, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, um, of approving that makeup of the human resources, uh, committee, uh, human resources search committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay.
So did you, did the board want me to stay on that? I'm willing, I'm willing to stay on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I would think if there was no discussion, sure.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make, I want to, I want to make sure, because I'm, you know.
Yeah, no, thank, yeah.
You're gonna throw that back like a potato.
No, no, no.
No, and it's a lot, you know, you guys have gone through a lot of work.
I've got a lot invested in that right now, so I'd like to stay on that one.
And I'll send both of you these updates to you, Richard, tomorrow morning.
Alright, uh, financial report.
Uh, Madam Chair, you have my reports. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Jody? No, alright, and thank you for everything, Jody, I know it's been crazy time, and it's your first go around, and thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely, very impressed.
Learning a lot.
Thank you very much. Um, next up, curriculum.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for Karen? No, okay, right, thank you. Technology. Waiting to see if she's on there, but no, okay. Okay, any questions, uh, for Wayne, for Deb's report? Well, great, thank you. Great, Principal Report, Mr. Ty. Any questions for Ann on her report? No? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bogil? I don't think so, but that's okay. Any questions for Joe?
I just had one. Um, the, in the section for roadmap reflection, teaching regulation strategies, it says 44% of teachers say they had no, had no or minimal instruction on how to implement roadmap reflections. And then 50% of the teachers report saving instruction on three or fewer regulation strategies. I'm just wondering why that's so low.
So we focused on the morning team, and now as we got this feedback, we saw the need for the PM and the actual explicit regulation strategies. So immediately, uh, the leadership team came up with some plans to do that, and that's what we we recently got, and when you see Eric's, uh, PowerPoint, you see what was presented to the staff based on the, uh, on the feedback that they had given us and, and the steps forward that we are taking. And then, uh, I, uh, provided the staff based on a lot of the things that, uh, this Donahue provided, and Eric Mann provided, different regulation strategies to do, and, uh, that's what my morning announcement consists of, is sometimes it might be a self-regulation strategy to practice, and the children do it with their teachers in the classroom while I walk them through them.
I also wanted to say that I've enjoyed reading all the information, because it seems like you're doing a lot of work over there on it, and I'm appreciative of all that as a, a board member, uh, because I think it's important, um, the social, emotional learning being part that we're trying to improve on for the kids, I think is a huge, with everything that they've gone through the last couple of years too, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that, too.
I do think the other important aspect is to consider the teachers as well, and that's one of the things that I like. It's very good about keeping in the forefront for myself is that, you know, without the teachers being able to be well-regulated and, you know, understanding where they're coming from, and self-aware, it's hard to help the kids.
Yeah, but when I was reading that, I was like, I was like, oh, that's really good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Alright, Wayne Superintendent's report. Questions for Wayne? No? Thank you, Ann. Committee reports, uh, personnel.
Now we've done everything, there's nothing new.
Just, no, district meeting coming up.
Yeah, that's about it.
Um, health and wellness.
Uh, we did meet, uh, 1:24. And we, um, gonna be looking at some new health trust challenges that district has here. We may have a thousand, a hundred miler in May. Uh, and then, um, I forgot the name right, Marissa from Cheshire. Marissa. Uh, she, she came up with a couple of new grants, one was, uh, for the elementary school is run Rita Marathon, um, which sounded really good, and, uh, that was our first meeting for the year. Next meeting scheduled for 21. 3:21 is the next one.
We are going to be starting, uh, we had a couple of requests this past week, for people are getting a little antsy, and I think today with the letter. So we're going to be doing a, uh, walking challenge, starting next Monday, going to March 14th. We're gonna be walking from Sevilla, Spain, to Carroia, Spain, it's about a hundred miles, and, uh, we'll walk around different areas.
And I think given Sean's expertise in Spanish culture.
I've been to both places. I have, I've been, yeah, yeah. I do.
We're trying to use real pictures that some of us, you know, have places that we've been to, so.
They're really old, and I was not good at photography then, but yes, yes. Yep.
Now, remember, a few years ago, you didn't participate, but the board participated in one of those challenges, so.
Yeah, that was good.
That was the summer one that, uh, that was, uh, right its way with, uh, the Cheshire Medical Center.
Yeah, so. Oh, cool, so all these walking challenges, that's just for staff?
Yeah.
So the board couldn't get in on that, like, we got in on that other thing?
Yeah, because that was the outside thing.
Oh, that's right, it was the, it was from, yeah, the penny with the thing, yeah. Yeah, so yeah, keep us abreast of that, because it was, it was fun, you guys, Sean didn't do it, it was the four of us without Sean, he wouldn't do it. But we had fun. We threw one of the bus.
Throwing under the bus would be telling you why I didn't do this.
We, we, we got him every time, like, unmercifully, when that was going on, that he didn't do it, but anyway.
It was funny.
He didn't, no. Anyway, alright, thank you, Anna and Jim. Um, Finance Budget Committee, um, we don't have anything right now, we've, you know. Yeah, so then we just have district meeting coming up. Uh, Staff Development.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Uh, Legislation NHSBA.
I don't have anything to report on.
Nope, um, and, uh, the only, I have to report, um, in April, I think it is, um, and I, I didn't write down the acronym for it, but the NHSBA is, um, uh, sending a representative, and I couldn't make it, and actually several other people couldn't because of work commitments, but to North Carolina, I think it is, the with the regional group that's forming kind of in lieu of the NSBA to flesh that out, so, um, we'll keep you abreast of, of all that. Um, HASP didn't meet, uh, alright, Selectmen, Richard?
The only thing I have was I did have made a public comment last budget committee meeting in reference to Article 2, in the spirit of transparency, I was hoping that perhaps the percentage increase could be included on that, as well as the dollar sign. I'm a little disappointed that that didn't happen, but if it doesn't, we'll just talk about it.
Yeah, Jody was, that's on her list to check with the DRA for, yeah.
Sorry, Richard, I just didn't get to it with all the other stuff, but I will, um, I will get that information.
Great, thank you. Um, Facilities.
Uh, Facilities has not met since our last meeting, but we are, next week, I should have the agenda out to you guys by, if not tomorrow, Friday. And the state inspection must be late again until sometime this week.
Uh, Community Connections, April?
Um, I, since our last meeting, have done one spotlight of staff on our Community Connections page. And I know that, I, I didn't mention it earlier, but, um, Sam had sent out a message through school messenger about the ta- four people to, per student for the games and stuff, and I didn't know if it would be helpful to just lay out the rules again on Community Connections, or.
Yeah, I think that's just a reminder to, to students in the school that if you're not playing, you really can't show up with a bunch of kids and go and watch a game, it's really for the kids' families and their guests. It was just an internal reminder.
Okay, so not quite, okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to throw it out there that, you know, we need it. Yeah, because I mean, the plan was for, and the tickets, so, I mean, it should be pretty easy to, to police that.
And yet kids still assume that they can just still come watch basketball games.
Yeah.
I know they really want to.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, if there's somebody at the door checking it, I mean, maybe we should, you should do that, if there's a problem.
There is someone at the door checking it, but it's always hard at the door to say to kid, we came from in.
Well, you don't have a ticket. You know, plan says tickets, so that should be pretty easy. But no, I, I see if it was not to put it on Community Connections, if it was an internal reminder.
I, when I said we didn't have anything, I was a big fat liar for staff development.
I, I thought, I wasn't sure if that was this committee.
I'm like, because now I gotta call it a CD.
No, that's fine, and I'm like, wait a minute, what are all these emails Karen and Paul, we've been talking about, we're gonna set up all these meetings for the rest of my life, I have a meeting scheduled with these people. You blocked it out.
So, we actually, Karen has sent out a very thoughtful email to, uh, people that, and I'm trying to pull up, if you want to speak to who's gonna end up being on this committee. Um, so she sent, she spent a lot of thought in prepping to kind of gear us up for what's coming up this year, and we have some deadlines coming up, so I, in fact, do have a committee report to make. I would like to give Karen a chance to the floor.
So this is the year that our, um, uh, professional development master plan is due, so we just have to revisit the plan and update it, and that has to do by June, so, um, it's, it's trial by fire for me, but, um, we have a committee of, um, teachers, a teacher from that middle high school, and a teacher from the elementary school, our two board members, our two principals, and and Paula and I, and, uh, so we'll be meeting four times to, uh, just, I sent out the plan ahead so they can look at it and give feedback at our first meeting. It's for me, because I know it feels like a time, but it's, I'm gonna try to keep it to once a month, so that we can just, uh, I, I think it's gonna be relatively easy, that there is some change that needs to be made, but a lot of it is, it will stay, it will stay the same, so it shouldn't be too difficult, I'll make it as painless as possible.
Yeah, I have two meetings on the 18th.
At the same time, no?
No, that's good, that's.
Don't give my report ahead of time.
That's right, no, I was on that Staff Development Committee, I, I was two times ago, or maybe when the plan was due, and it, I mean, and it was a lot of work, I think a lot of stuff changed that year, because I remember it being really like in-depth, I think I remember it last time saying that a lot of it carried over, so, but it's interesting, it definitely was really interesting work, so. Yes, they're all, they're not all interesting, but thank you for saying that. Awesome, thank you, guys. Uh, tuition. When you were like, I'm a big fat liar, I was like, why?
I know, I'm like, look, I'm like, wait a minute, Staff Development, CD, oh, hold on, I do have some.
Yeah. Um, Behavior Support Team.
I thought you didn't do, I thought, I'm sorry, spaced over tuition.
Oh, because I just said tuition, there's nothing, because.
Okay, um, so Behavior Support, we actually did not meet in January, I got mandated to work my day off, so I had to go in last minute, um, to the post office, so we didn't have that meeting, uh, we were scheduled it for, we rescheduled it for this coming Friday, next Friday, the 18th. Um, and Julia's actually gonna run that, because I was now again called out of town to do another class for the post office, so. So, that's why I didn't want Julie to jump ahead, because she's doing that one too.
And it's the last day before break, so everybody will either be really happy or be like, come on, so. Uh, Joint Laws, um, Ann, when is our next meeting? No, okay, thank you, I know it's in my, in my, in my Google, okay, April. I flipped in the calendar right before I, I left work, and I couldn't find it, so, alright, cool. That's alright, I know, I know I'll have it in my calendar somewhere. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, Citizen Comments? Richard, you're the only citizen, no comment? Okay, thank you. Um. I'm sorry, Zoom.
Okay, Alex, do so, do you have anything?
No, most of them.
Donna, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for all the hard work they're putting in, this budget process and everything that goes with it is not easy, and it is very.
Donna, I, I don't know if you got to finish.
Can't hear anybody.
I could hear her.
Hold, hold on a sec, we're, I know.
Does the volume need to be up?
Donna, are you still there?
Karen?
Yes.
Can they type, if they have a comment, maybe?
I, we keep, I don't know, I don't, I don't understand what's going on.
If, yeah, maybe they can type their comments, since we can't hear them.
I know Karen even wanted to bring forward the Girls on the Run program again, and get your blessing.
It was, she said.
I said, John, Donna, that had something.
And I think it's on our side, so if you have anything, if you have any questions, type them out.
They, they must be able to.
Yeah.
And they can hear each other, because Karen knew that Alex said he was all set.
Wow, that's never happened.
Yeah, that is weird.
Yeah, they, I mean, everything's on, if they can hear us.
Yeah, it's weird. Yeah, so if, if you want to read their questions, if they have questions.
Weird. Yeah, and I can't see that far, so.
I'm surprised I can read any of it, to be honest.
Speakers and microphone are two different settings, so obviously the microphone's working and the speakers are not.
Yeah.
Teresa said she's all set.
So does, does nobody have any questions? It doesn't look like, or?
I guess no one.
At the moment. I was gonna say Karen.
It's what, she wanted to verify that we can use our soul, I think it's still middle high school, like we have in years.
Wayne? So do we just need a motion to approve that?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And, and that's all she asked, she didn't put anything else, okay. Alright, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or abstain, okay, great.
Excellent, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Okay, thank you, um, citizens out in Zoom, sorry for the, the little, um.
Thank you, Richard.
Technical difficulty, bye, Richard. Alright, so we're just seeing the motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion going non-public.
Um, roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. No one seconded.
Jim seconded.
I didn't hear it either.